Oh, sure.
That was sounding.
Adrianne Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, August 15, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting work sessions on federal and state grant updates and Imagine Dubuque.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for August 15, 2022. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
You. And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Our first work session topic is federal and state grant updates. I will turn it over to Director of Strategic Partnerships, Teri Goodman.
Thank you, Adrian, and thank you, Mayor and council members, for having us this evening to give you an update on grants and partnerships in Dubuque as a result of ARPA and the bipartisan infrastructure law. To begin, though, we thought we would introduce our team, so I'm going to ask Justin Tilgen to come up and introduce himself, and then we have another guest.
My name's Justin Tilgen. I'm a technical grant analyst and assistant in the City Manager's Office.
And I've asked Abhishek to just tell you a little bit about himself because this is his first time as our ICMA Fellow in front of you, and he will be part of our presentation, and he works with Justin and I every day on these projects.
Hello, everyone. I'm Abhishek Rai. I'm the ICMA Fellow. I started in June this year, and before that, I completed my MPA this year also, and I'm happy to be here. I'm originally from India and just came to the United States in 2019, and thank you for having me.
Thank you. Thanks, Justin and Abhishek. We're just really thrilled to have a great team working on grant opportunities in Dubuque. And so tonight, I just want to remind everyone that, you know, without a solid foundation, we would have trouble creating something of value. And so tonight, we're going to be talking a lot about foundation building and what we've done over the past six months and over the past year, as we look at almost, you know, an eight-year trajectory, if not more, with these two major grant programs that have been, you know, passed in legislation by the federal government. So without a solid foundation, you'll have trouble creating anything of value. We're going to be making these presentations every six months. We presented to you six months ago on March 7. That was our first presentation, and we thought it would be a good idea to continue to give you updates as we go forward. Tonight, you're going to hear about grant awards. To date, the city of Dubuque and our community and county have seen an influx of $111,101,000 in grant awards and allocations in Dubuque, in the city of Dubuque and in Dubuque County. You're also going to hear about grant research, coordination, and tracking. Some of that was in the memo you received. I tried to lay out the process of city staff and our partners as we deliberate, as we learn about grant opportunities, deliberate and identify a strategy going forward. And then we are also going to be talking to you about by the numbers, measuring our incremental success. And while tonight, we're going to touch on how these grants we've received have moved the needle on certain priorities, including City Council priorities, Imagine Dubuque Comprehensive Plan, the Poverty Reduction and Prevention Program, Climate Action Plan, and the City Council priorities, we're going to probably focus more on those in six more months, but for tonight, this is what we're going to cover. So you may recall, ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act, was passed last year in March. We responded immediately by hosting three different community meetings. We had an additional meeting this year after the bipartisan infrastructure law was passed and signed into law. But ARPA was specifically to relieve the impacts of the global pandemic. It focused, as you can see here, on the economic impacts on households, individuals, small businesses, nonprofits, industries, specifically tourism and hospitality. It provided premium pay for essential employees. It also helped government services that were affected by revenue reduction, and of course, it also provided for funds to make investments in broadband water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure, which of course Dubuque did. So these were the eligible uses of these funds. Where are we today on the ARPA timeline? I'm just going to show you. We're down the line pretty far, if you look at the star, and you know that Dubuque, the one difference with ARPA, different from the four CARES Acts that were passed by the previous administration, those dollars primarily went to businesses. With ARPA, there was tremendous solidarity amongst National Association of Governors, the National League of Cities, US Conference of Mayors, the National Association of State Legislatures, and other, or these big groups nationally came together and said, we need direct allocation to city governments, county governments, and states to get through the impact of COVID. So ARPA did include those direct allocations, and as you know, the city of Dubuque received approximately $27 million, the county $18 million. Where are we today? Your budget amendment from September 14, 2021, you know, directed staff on where to expend those dollars, so that's available on our ARPA and Bill webpage. It's available for the public, but that's moved the dollars that we received as a city to specific projects, largely water infrastructure, broadband, paying citizens' utility bills who are unable to pay, as you may recall, and travel to Dubuque and other interests in the community that were eligible. So we're pretty far down, but there are competitive grants in ARPA as well. We have competed for those. Our partners across the community have competed for those, and some remain. There will be more grants next year. But really, ARPA is winding down, and the final commitment of funds is going to be most likely in '25, '26, with some exceptions. You may also recall that the state received a lot of money. So while the federal government has distributed a lot of their money through grant programs, there are some remaining. The state of Iowa had $1.2 billion that it is moving into different state agencies and departments. So Destination Iowa, for example, may sound familiar to you. That is some of the ARPA money that the governor put into, you know, the Iowa Economic Development Authority. Nonprofit innovation grants that we've had, I think the Dreams Center and others, I think the Art Museum also applied for that, and I think Four Mounds did. Other community partners applied for those funds in the nonprofit innovation grant bucket. That's still out there. So some of this money is still going to be rolling around, and those projects are going to have to be obligated, or the funds for those projects that are successful in receiving those grant funds will have to be obligated by 2025. And so we're moving forward on all the ARPA funds, and that's where we are in the ARPA timeline. Then there is the bipartisan infrastructure law programs, and as you know, the bipartisan infrastructure law was $1.2 trillion. ARPA was $1.9 trillion. These are the eligible programs for the bipartisan infrastructure law. So you can see probably what we saw and what our partners found in the four meetings that we held over the last year with over 200 people, staff and partners, individuals in the community, participating, over 50 nonprofits participating. These two big grant programs really fall into two categories. There's a built infrastructure, and there's a human infrastructure. So ARPA addresses a lot more of the human need that was left as a result of the global pandemic, where the infrastructure law is really to make America competitive again and to increase the amount of funds. In fact, of the $1.2 trillion, $550 million is all new money. So it's really plus up existing accounts, and it's created new opportunities for grants. And just remember, all of these grants, ARPA and the bipartisan infrastructure law, require that every grant we write is seen through the lens of equity and climate. So those are the two critical sort of benchmarks that are used by this administration to measure your success or failures as a grant. So as we said before, we're very fortunate that the city of Dubuque and City Council had the foresight to pass, you know, approved of these programs for climate, the Climate Action Plan, but also the Poverty Reduction Prevention Program that focuses largely on equity. So we're ahead of the game in that regard. The former administration focused on businesses. We were able to get the John Deere Grant, for example. You may recall that. They really, you know, focused on grant benefits going to businesses and private sector. The prior administration, that would be the Obama administration, focused on job creation. You may remember ARRA, and the focus there was every grant had to be measured by how many jobs were created. So just so you know and remember that. So where are we on the timeline for Bill? Again, Bill passed in November. It was signed by the President, and the first grants are really just beginning to trickle out. We did submit RACE in June. That was our first opportunity. We submitted the RACE grant, and we're happy that we found out last week that we do have a RACE planning grant for the overpass on 14th, the five roundabouts on 16th Elm and Admiral Sheehy Drive for trail enhancements on the 16th Street Bridge and onto the island connecting to the Congresswoman Henson's Community Project dollars for the trail to run up to the Veterans Memorial and enhance that trail. It also puts bus pads on Kerper. We didn't realize until we met as staff and with partners that for transit, they said there's no place for us to drop people off, just drop them on the grass or in the mud or in wet rain or in snow. So it will also put a trail on one side of Kerper and then bus pads wherever the jewel stops to let folks off for work or to swim at Sutton next year, you know, so that we can get folks to their destinations safely as a community. So that grant was successful last week. We have three more transportation grants coming up before October. So that's where we are now, but this is going to run, as you can see, it's going to run out to 2029, and we found out today, some of the grants for bipartisan infrastructure law, we will not have to obligate the funds until 2031. So this is not a short term, as my husband would say, honey, it's not a sprint, it's a marathon. So just as long as you as council members know what staff are doing, what we're all doing together in this opportunity, it's an unprecedented opportunity in the country. Some grant awards, just to highlight how we are moving the needle, but that in-depth look will come at our next presentation. The RACE planning grant clearly addresses infrastructure needs. Those are council priorities. The Crescent Community Health Center received an ARPA grant for $75,000 to hire an African-American Black community health worker. That is moving the needle on equity, we think, and on our plan for the poverty prevention and reduction work. Destination Iowa, Field of Dreams, received $12.5 million. That's recovery for the tourism industry, but it's also going to help us to attract workforce and make our region and our county much more attractive for recreation and tourism. And the Trail Connections, again, the 16th Street Trail for 650,000, that was a Community Project grant, those are the new earmarks in Congress. And Congresswoman Henson has been very active, and because of her position on the Appropriations Committee, was able to secure these funds for us, and the city matches 215. So we'll be putting about a million into trails to connect to that 16th Street Bridge and bring people up to that beautiful Veterans Memorial. There is an expanded data spreadsheet that shows you all $111,100,000 in grants that have been received, and you can find it on the ARPA page, and it is live, so it's constantly being updated by Justin. And I'm going to just briefly show you again how we set up for a grant. It takes people, planning and partnerships. Usually, we get the NOFA. You hear people talk about a NOFO or a NOFA, Notice of Federal Funding Opportunity. Once it comes out, we get together, we have the built infrastructure team, we have the human infrastructure team, but each of those, and again, Justin will go into detail on these, they're broken out into like surface transportation, air transportation, river transportation, bikes, trails, all this. So there are topic teams, and so that team gets notified to come together, and we sit down and we decide. We go through the grant, we work with Andy Seth in Washington, D.C., who is on all of our meetings remotely, but he helps us and gives us good guidance on a strategy. Are we eligible? How much money do we need? How much match do we have? Does the staff have the capacity to both write or support the writing? Do we need a benefit cost analysis done by ECIA? How much is that going to cost? And then, you know, ultimately, do we submit or don't we? And then the work proceeds. So you see that that is what we do with our staff, and we've had to date over 250 meetings and teams groups just on grants and our other topic teams. So we're very focused on it. And I'm going to pass this to, I think it took too much time, I'm going to pass this to Justin.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Again, I'm Justin Tilgen, a technical grant analyst and assistant. So just want to briefly highlight again, as Teri's explained, you know, we've really been working through these teams, as we call them, topic teams. So we actually have 16 topic teams built around subject matter in the ARPA or under the ARPA column, and then we have 12 teams that we have listed under the bipartisan infrastructure law. So a total of 28 topic teams, some that are meeting weekly as opportunities come up, some we're still developing with the community members. So we are working through those, as Teri explained a little bit, we do some grant discovery, people share information and intelligence or grant opportunities that they're aware of. There's discussions that take place about partnership opportunities and how to be most successful with an application, and then some grant analysis, sort of that preparedness assessment. And so we've had certainly some teams that looked at opportunities and said, you know, okay, maybe we're not, you know, in the best place this year, but now we know next year what we've got to put into play. So with some of these cyclical grant opportunities, then we're certainly chasing after those. But one of the wonderful benefits that the city's been able to offer is what we've been calling our North Star Team. So again, as Teri mentioned, we're focusing with every grant application on equity and climate action, but knowing that we're fortunate enough and unique enough to have five strategic plans on the table and that the council has approved. So we work with our North Star Team there, so that would consist of Corey Burbach for Council Goals and Priorities, Wally Wernamont with the Imagine Dubuque Comprehensive Plan, Jenny Peterson-Brant with our Arts and Culture Master Plan, Anderson Sancy for Equitable Poverty Reduction and Prevention Plan, and then Gina Bell with the Climate Action Plan 2030, and then also Collins Ebo, and now Dr. Gisela Atkin-Schadl to help us out and serve as our North Star Team. So not only are they a resource internally to the city and our applications, but they've certainly offered their expertise to community groups and many of our partners to make sure that we're moving the needle towards success in the areas that are called for in these comprehensive plans. So just some quick, high-level numbers that we want to highlight tonight. Again, there's much more detail on the city's website, cityofdubuque.com or dot org slash ARPA, and that will break down much more of the detail in these numbers. But we did want to highlight the total competitive grants that we're at currently. These are ARPA grants and competitive that people had to apply for. So federally, we've received $37.5 million, and then from state grant opportunities, there was $28.2 million received between the city and our partners. Then we also just highlight here those direct allocations, both to the county and the city, that were part of the tranche from the Department of Treasury and allocated to those jurisdictions. Next is our bipartisan infrastructure law. So this is, as Teri said, just getting rolling now here. So our first success there was the $2.28 million for the RACE application. So we expect to see this number grow, and we'll keep you up to date on that. Also, we list state there because we, some of the programs, again, funds will go through the state on these opportunities. So if you look at the total received from grant opportunities, the two total from federal and state, and then you add in the county and city allocations, that's what gets us to this $111.1 million received to date throughout the community from both ARPA and Bill funding. Then with that, not only, you know, just a detailed and oftentimes messy spreadsheet full of numbers and details, one of the promises that we had initially was to, you know, aim for transparency. And so going beyond the spreadsheet, we have aimed to create a story map using our GIS software and the expertise that we have from that department. So actually, Abhishek has joined us and has come onto our team here to help us with this project and get this launched, and so he is going to highlight a little bit on that project here this evening, and I will hand that over to him.
Hello. Yeah. So as I came in in June and started working on the story maps for grants under ARPA and BIL, we started working on visualizing and just bringing everything together in one place. Information about grants is scattered across the internet on different websites and different database, and Justin is doing a lot of things, a lot of work on it to gather it and analyze it, but also in order to present it to people and increase transparency and make it more accessible to the residents of Dubuque, we started creating the story map, and this is just a beginning. And this is the cover of the story map, and we have divided up the grants for visualization into two categories, the city administration grants as well as the community partners grants. So the city administration grants is the section where we would have projects of the city which are funded through the ARPA and BIL and how we are using, how our departments are using these funds. And I have, for this presentation, I have added, not for this presentation, but I have added one story about the Juul EV implementation, and this would have, every story or every grant story would have a map with points on the map. For example, this implementation project would involve purchasing of an electric bus and installing an electric charging station at a JOTC, the training center. And I have started creating a map, a master map with every information, and for example, and as I add information on the database behind, from the back end, more dots will start appearing on this map. And now there are only two maps because we are in the process of clearing data and make it, organize it to upload it. And so most of the grants would have this kind of format where there will be grant amount, the agency awarding it, and information about the grant, and if the project is a multi-year project, it would have some kind of timeline, and this is an estimated timeline where the department is estimating that they would be completing this project around spring, but this can change upon because this is a multi-year project and there are a lot of And these are representational photos as of now because we are just starting. This project is starting, just started, so it started in November, but it's, you know, it's on the way, and you know, it's a long process, and it could be completed in spring, so there are different things, but I have used stock photos for now, and this is just one, but as we are working on creating grant profiles and, you know, working with different departments, and I'll be working on that and getting all the information and adding more, and they would start appearing over here. And the second part of the visualization is the community partners grant. These are the grants which are not city, but given by the federal or state government directly to the, in the community, to maybe nonprofits or just individuals. For example, one of the grants I was able to highlight over here in my time over here was the Restaurant Revitalization Fund, which is a fund by the U.S. Small Agency, Small Business Administration. And this is something Justin has been tracking. He's been, Justin and Teri, they are interacting and having all these teams meeting, and they ask about what kind of grants are there in the community, and we get information and track it, and this is some information, and this is the major, this is the map where each dot would have information about, for example, this was, the Restaurant Revitalization Fund was given out to restaurants to survive COVID when they were hit hard and they were shut to just keep functioning, and we expand it, different, for example, different restaurants are there, some information, like for example, Ichiban got, how much money they got, loan number and information which will be important to increase transparency, and even if it's a franchise, it would be, it would appear here. And yeah, that's the grant.
Teri will wrap up. Thank you. Thanks. Well, thank you. I wish we had more time for Q and A, but I just want you to know, too, that on the horizon, we just saw the Inflation Reduction Act pass, and there are $369 billion worth of grant opportunities for energy security and climate change. So it's coming down the pike, so there will be more, there will be more meetings and more homework, and hopefully more opportunities for Dubuque to achieve its goal. So if there's any time for questions, we'd love to answer any, but that's our report for this evening. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you all. Very much appreciate it. We have, it's 5:57. Anybody have? I'll give it one question. Oh, boy. You both raised your hand at the exact same time.
Give it to the most.
All right. We're going to go with Mr. Resnick for this one. Yeah. Maybe the next round goes to Ms. Farber then.
I'll talk fast.
All right. 30 seconds. So first of all, I'm continuing to be amazed at the great work that you and your team, because these are competitive grants, and city of Dubuque wins, wins, wins a lot with your team. So thank you on behalf of the citizens for all the great work that you do. Now, quick question. The 16th Street Bridge to the Veterans Memorial, that includes the bridge itself, correct?
No, it includes a hike bike trail next to the bridge.
Okay, but right now, it's a one-lane, one-lane road on that bridge, you know, one bike, you can't even go both ways. Is that, is that part going to be improved on the bridge itself?
There's a bridge grant, improvement grant available, that just became available. I think that's being assessed, but the hike bike trail will not be on the bridge. It's going to be cantilevered or attached to the bridge, so there will be a new trail that will cross over the Piazzetta Channel at the 16th Street Bridge. And that's a planning grant, and just so you know that a lot of these building, bipartisan infrastructure law grant opportunities for infrastructure are giving their first year as planning. Our goal is to get the, we got the planning grant this year. We're going to apply next year for implementation, for capital improvements. We think they'll say no because it'll be a little soon, but we do believe, you know, our goal is to achieve this goal within the next five years, is to achieve the full build-out of this plan. So back to your original question, it's, this grant is for planning to attach and build a wider hike bike trail over the Piazzetta Channel attached to the bridge.
And that would be great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ware.
Thank you. All right. We are at 5:59. I want to make sure we have time, so we'll email other questions. I appreciate that we have them. Thank you very much. Just real quickly, the one thing that I do want to make sure that I say up here is that I, we so appreciate the transparency that you are showing through all this and that you're helping the city of Dubuque to show, to make sure that people know where all this money is going. And the more that we can do that, the better. So thank you very much for making that effort and making sure that we have a website that people can go to, and we can educate the entire community about how this, how we're using these funds, because that's really the important question that needs to be answered.
Right. And we appreciate all the partners that work with us on this because it's really a community effort.
Yes.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And I believe there are no further questions and no further business in this work session, so we will stand adjourned.